So, good morning, everybody. I want to welcome you to the March 19th, 2024 meeting of the Calver County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I'd like to ask Pastor Kimmel if he'd come forward to give us an invocation, please. Morning, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for the privilege of coming this morning, and I would like to look to the Lord in prayer as we begin. Our Heavenly Father, we thank you that you are the one true God who created heaven and earth. We thank you for your work in sending your Savior, Jesus Christ, to offer salvation through his shed blood. We thank you for each of these ones that is involved in our county and working on our behalf. We thank you for the burdens and loads that they carry. We thank you for their faithfulness in executing wisdom and decisions that need to be made, and we pray your blessing upon them today, your direction, your hand of wisdom and accountability that will help them to make decisions that are best for this county and for the people, and we thank you for their service. Thank you for so many underneath them that work in different capacities, and we pray that you would bless them for their efforts as well. We thank you, Lord, that you hear us, that you care for us today, and we pray your blessings upon this meeting in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, made visible with liberty and justice for all.
So Pastor Kimmel is new, right? You own, how long have you been in town?
Since December.
Welcome.
Welcome.
He's at the Baptist Church just south of Prince Edward. We met at the Sportsman's Dinner, so, yeah, great. Well, welcome to Calver County. Glad to have you.
Thank you.
The next item I have is to approve the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda as presented?
Make a motion. We approve the agenda submitted.
Second.
Have a motion, the second, that we approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion on that motion hearing? None. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The next item on the agenda is public service announcements, and I'm going to ask Commissioner Arlen if he would like to make one.
Sure. So Greg Cameron, who was a retired MSP lieutenant, spent, I think, 25 years at DeBarry, came to sheriff's office, spent 15 years there, big in neighborhood watch. He ran neighborhood watch meetings for years and years and years. Had retired less than six months ago, 62 years old, and passed away Friday, I believe he was. He was on a fishing trip with several friends in Virginia. It appears he had a sudden heart attack and died. Unfortunately, the average age of a law enforcement officer is 62 years old, so he hit it right on it, which is sad to say. Greg was a very, very hard worker, great detective. I've worked alongside Greg for many years. He'll be missed.
Thank you. We want to pass along our condolences to his family. I have several public service announcements today. Tonight, there'll be a public hearing on our FY25 staff recommended budget. That'll be at 7:00 PM right here in this room, where you can watch online. Also, you can send in written comments by email to dawn wood@calvercounty.maryland.gov, or you can mail them to 175 Main Street in Prince Edward if you can't attend tonight. So you'll see some ducks up here today. It's not because we've gone ducking crazy. It's because we have our ducks in a row, and on this Saturday, there's going to be an annual duck race at the therapeut, at the
Aquatic Center.
Aquatic Center. Jeez, I'm sorry. And that will support therapeutic recreational activities that go on there at the pool, especially in the summertime. That's from 3:30 to 4:00, and if we can sell 400 ducks, Commissioner Hart is going to be dressed as a duck and going to wade into the pool. Is that correct, Commissioner Hart?
I've heard that, but I bet there's some hunters that want to shoot me.
And I've heard today
You're not allowed to shoot yellow ducks. You're good.
I've heard today, we only need to sell, what, 30 or 40 more ducks?
They put me on clearance. I'm a little disappointed.
Five or $6 apiece. We may buy all the ducks out just to make sure that he wades in, but if you have an opportunity, you can attend the event on Saturday from 3:30 to 4:00 at the Hall Aquatic Center. If not, please buy a duck. It's a great, great cause to support the center and all the good work that they do, and we can't wait to see Commissioner Hart in his duck suit. And on Sunday, March 24th, at Parks and Recreation, we host the annual Easter egg hunt at, excuse me, Holland Point Park, and that begins at 12:30 PM. Remember to bring your basket and camera for photos with the Easter Bunny. There'll be food trucks, vendors, games, and other activities. So we want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to enjoy that event. Also, it's that time of year where you can get tree coupons for native trees now through November 20th for residents that live outside of the critical area. So you can get your coupons there. The coupon is good for $50 off a tree for up to six trees sized at two gallons or larger, and you can get those tree coupons through planning and zoning at their environment, through their website, www.calvercountymaryland.gov/trecoupon. Shoot. I think that concludes all the public service announcements for today. That brings us to a proclamation, and today, as I always, I'm going to do this proclamation because we're recognizing National Agriculture Week. We have some staff.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Caroline Trossback, the Agricultural Development Specialist with Calvert County's Department of Economic Development. We thank all growers and landowners of Calvert County for a steady food supply, providing a diversified economy and a heritage of hard work. We appreciate the fresh fruits, vegetables, aquaculture, wild harvested seafood, grain, meat, dairy, wine, beer, timber, and other value-added products that are available in Calvert County due to their knowledge, the growers' knowledge and efforts. We appreciate organizations such as Soil Conservation, University of Maryland Extension, Watermen's Association, and Farm Bureau, among others, for the consistent agriculture education and support they provide. This week is also Maryland's Agricultural Literacy Week. We thank the Commissioners, all the Commissioners, for reading this year's book titled Farm Boots. We also thank the students, teachers, libraries, and principals for welcoming us and their willingness to learn more about agriculture. We sincerely appreciate this opportunity to show our appreciation for agriculture for today and every day. Now, I would like our special guests to come up to the microphone, introduce themselves and their businesses, the organizations they represent, and provide any public comments if they wish. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Kathy Cosgrove. I am the president of the Calver County Farm Bureau, and I also own Horseman Farm in St. Leonard. This weekend and the next weekend, we will have our Easter fun on the farm at the farm, and Easter egg hunts, Easter Bunny, all kinds of fun things to come out and see. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, come right up here in the middle.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Treasure Thomas. I'm the founder of my mustard seed. We are urban farm located in St. Leonard. We currently produce value-added products such as microgreens, edible flowers, and culinary herbs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Ashley Sunderland. I'm here with my mother-in-law, Linda Sunderland, representing Linda's greenhouses and Jake's Produce. We're family-owned and operated for 35 years now, and it has been a pleasure serving the community.
Thank you.
Come on up.
Come on up.
Good morning. I'm Debbie Jones. I'm head of the Calvert County Farmers Market Association as well as Windy Willow Farm, and we appreciate all of the support that you guys give us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Ashley Brown, Acting Assistant District Manager for Calvert Soil Conservation District. Thank you for having us and representing, appreciating everything our farmers do for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bob Harvey, State's Attorney. Now, you all may be wondering, what is this attorney doing standing up here on Agricultural Appreciation Day? But at 6:30 this morning, I live in the middle of a big farm, and at 6:30 this morning, Ms. Linda's son, Jacob, was out there plowing the fields. My wife and I truly appreciate everything you do. That just goes to show, it was pitch black, and we're wondering, what the heck is going on out there? And here he is out there plowing up that field. So we know how hard farmers work, and we really appreciate everything you all do. Thank you.
Sir, don't your chairs actually face the field they were plowing?
So does my bed, correct?
So I want to thank all of you for joining us this morning. So a lot of you know, I spent eight years at Department of Ag, and I got to tour Maryland, and Maryland, in Maryland, agriculture is our number one industry. A lot of people are surprised by that, and we have over 12,000 farms throughout the state of Maryland producing lots of fruits and vegetables and milk and all kinds of great products. And we want to thank all of our local farmers here today that have joined us for what they do for our community. You know, people are very concerned now about where their food comes from, and once you eat fresh fruits and vegetables and meat products, you don't want to go back to a grocery store. I tell everybody that when they talk to me about trying to buy a beef somewhere, I said, just be careful, because once you buy a local beef, you're not going back to that grocery store. And you may think it's pricey, but it's worth every penny that you pay for it, because it is quality, high quality, and, you know, it's, it's all the hard work that they do, and people say they moved to Calver County because of the great rural character that we have. What's because of these people? You know, they didn't develop their farms. You know, they've stuck with it. They tried to make a profit. Some years it's a little tougher than others, but that's the reason we have the open space, you know, is because, you know, they've maintained their farms and they haven't sold. And for generations, we've all stayed here, and Calver County's changed a lot. You know, when a lot of us, old people like me, when we grew up, there was tobacco everywhere, and there's no tobacco left anymore. There's a lot more produce and retail sales going on, so the industry is continuing to evolve and change, and we're very happy for that, because without that, we would lose our farms here in Calver County. It wouldn't be such a pretty scenery and rural nature. And so we want to thank all these people again for what they do to maintain the great character that we have, and with no further ado, I'll read this proclamation if I can. Whereas, the Agricultural Council of America, ACA, has designated March 19th, 2024 as National Agricultural Appreciation Day. Founded in 1973, the ACA is an organization uniquely composed of leaders in the agriculture, food, and fiber communities dedicated to increasing the public awareness of agriculture's vital role in our society. And whereas, Calver County is rich in farmland and aquatic resources, with over 285 farms and more than 500 farmers and watermen, these men and women serve as pillars of strength and character, displaying ingenuity in times of prosperity and perseverance in the face of hardships, while supplying our county, state, and nation with the abundance of high-quality produce, meat, dairy, grain, seafood, plants, timber, value-added food, and resource-based products. And whereas, Calver County farm and waterman families are a part of our rich rural culture, playing a significant role in Calver County by contributing to the local employment, economy, environment, and quality of life. And whereas, Calver County farm families are stewards of more than 24,600 acres of farmland, contributing to the health, beauty, productivity, and quality of our state's water, soil, wildlife, and forest resources for the benefit of all. And whereas, agriculture is the mainstay of each person, home, and community through food, fiber, fuel, and fun. And whereas, Calver County is grateful and committed to maintaining its robust rural heritage and keeping the county agricultural industry strong, diverse, and sustainable, while meeting consumer demand for local nutritious food and experience-based opportunities. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County that March 19th, 2024 be known as Agricultural Appreciation Day in Calver County. Be it further proclaimed that we encourage all citizens to be mindful of the role agriculture plays in their lives and acknowledge the importance of agriculture for Calver County's sustainability and legacy, given our hands and seals as 19th day of March 2024. Signed by all five. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And then they all move. Making your movement so far. Like all the way.
Have a good day. See ya.
Bye-bye now.
See you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Have a good day.
See you in a couple weeks.
If I can add, Debbie Jones is a 4-H leader in the county, so she's actually preparing our future to do what she does. Thank you for doing what you do, Debbie.
Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you.
So the next item on the agenda is an award, Employee Recognition Committee. Wes, morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Wes Lepre, the retired member of the Employee Recognition Committee, and I'm here today to announce, introduce the Calver County Government Employee of the Month for February 2024. The Employee of the Month, if you don't know, acknowledges individual excellence for superior job performance or special individual effort. Our February 2024 Employee of the Month is Sharon Robinson from Community Resources Transportation Division. Sharon, please come up and join the Commissioners. Sharon is one of those unsung employees. Well, not anymore. If you've traveled throughout the county, you've seen our buses, and many people in the county use and depend on our transportation system. She's been there driving and doing all kinds of support activities, covering double shifts in order to cover the routes and extreme, during times of extreme driver shortages. She's learned every route and is able to dispatch and handle office work as well. Her selfless efforts ensured essential public services for those who need it and continued without interruption despite challenging circumstances. Sharon's exceptional contributions to the public safety transportation division are outstanding, and for these reasons, Sharon Robinson is recognized as Calver County Government's Employee of the Month for February. Congratulations.
Morning, Commissioners. Sandy Wobbleton, Transportation Division Chief. I just want to piggyback on her employee nomination. She is an amazing employee. If we had every employee like her, we just, we would have no issues in the department. We have had a driver shortage since COVID hit, never experienced it before that, have and still continue to now, but Sharon, she's there whenever I call her, whenever we say, hey, we need you to do this. There's no questions asked. She gets up, she does it. She doesn't gripe, but at least not to us. I'm sure she probably does on her breath, but she just, she always says, if you need me, tell me. I'm there, and she's true to her word about it. She does whatever we ask, not only on the buses. She runs a regular special route, which is the appointment base for seniors and disabled passengers. She has a very good rapport with all of her passengers, but she doesn't hesitate to learn every single route we have. She could run it with her eyes closed. She's been doing it for that long. She takes on additional duties whenever she, we ask her if we need help in the office if we're, because we have short staff in the office, too. She's in there. She helps with the phone. She answers questions. She's actually, along those lines, too. Today, she's headed off to, up to, do wheelchair procurement training. She's one of our lead drivers and does it with the specialized service, so she's going to learn to, through training, to be a trainer. So she will then come back and train assistant training, the rest of the department, so that we don't have to pay an additional trainer to come in to assist with our yearly training for that. So like I said, she is, for lack of a better word, she's a workhorse, and she just, it's in her, in her blood, so we're grateful, grateful to have her.
Very good.
Sharon, I just want to thank you as Department Head for Calver County Community Resources. If we could clone you, we would, truly. You set the standard for everybody else, and not just in your division, but in our department. We recognize your superior customer service and your dedication, so thank you.
Sharon, before I give you this plaque, you know, what you do provides dignity. You know, when you can't get somewhere, that's a helpless feeling, and have to pick up the phone and try to call someone or a family member, you know, and when you get older and you lose that ability to do that, it's another piece of dignity, and, you know, and people say, well, government should provide this or that. But it takes human beings to make that happen. And I know you were there through all the challenges with COVID and everything else, and it's still a challenge, and we truly, truly say thank you and appreciate it, and want to give you this. And as Commissioner Nutter always said, the most important thing? The check.
Next item on the agenda is an appointment. We have one appointment. Deputy Administrator Turner.
Good morning, Commissioners. Deputy County Administrator Linda Turner. We have one appointment for the Employee Recognition Committee for you this morning. It is recommended that your approval to appoint Sarah Frey of the Department of Economic Development to the Employee Recognition Committee. There will be three remaining vacancies following this action.
Sarah, motion?
I make a motion that we approve Sarah Frey for the ERC Committee.
Second.
Have a motion, the second, that we appoint Sarah Frey to the Employee Recognition Committee. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is consent. There are several items under consent today. Item one, Department of Community Resources, Governor's Office of Children Funding. Item two, Department of Community Resources, FY 2025 Transportation Grant Application. Item three, Department of Planning and Zoning Consolidated Transportation Program Letter. Item four, Department of Planning, Zoning, Kingsley's Ridge Trail Easement, REPL-142796. Item five, Department of Parks and Recreation, Calver County Parks and Recreation Image and Audio Capturing Policy. Item six, Department of Public Works License Agreement for the Electric Vehicle Charging Station in St. Leonard, Maryland. Is there a motion to adopt these items under consent today?
Mr. President, I move that the Board adopt and approve the consent agenda items. Second.
Have a motion, the second, that we adopt the items under consent. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That brings us to new business. Item one, Department of Finance and Budget Service Charge for Semiannual Real Property Tax Billing FY 2025. Director Miller.
Yes, sir.
Mrs. Zen.
Good morning.
It's a pleasure to see you today, Ms. Zen. We only get this pleasure once a year.
You're right. I guess that's a good thing.
Oh, no, we would love to have you in more often.
Yes, Kay made it very clear that she wanted to present today after all her hard work, so I'll just provide a brief introduction to the issue. This is the service charge that we charge taxpayers when paying their tax bills on a semiannual basis.
So without Kay, will you please read the memo?
I'm Kay Zen, Account One with Finance and Budget. The background. The county is required to allow certain taxpayers to pay their annual real property tax bill in two installments, provided the county is their principal residence. One installment is due September 30th, and the other is due December 31st. The county may The county may charge a service charge on the second installment. The service charge has two components. One is to recoup three months of lost interest due to the delay in receiving the revenue. And the other is to cover administrative costs incurred as a result of processing two payments instead of one. The administration charge is calculated at 10% of the county's earnings rate, or 10% times 5.4%. As of prior years, the maximum service charge allowed by law is 1.65%. Discussion, as required by the annotated code, the Board of County Commissioners must set the annual service charge rate. The county currently earns 0.054 annually on its operating cash. This interest rate plus the administration charge, 0.54%, would result in an annual charge of 5.9%. Since the delay in receiving the revenue is three months, the service charge added to the second tax payment for fiscal year FY 2025, if approved, would be 0.014750%. The fiscal impact, this fee generates approximately $9,058.68 for the county on an annual basis and adds about .27 cents to the second installment tax bill for the average property owner. Conclusion, recommendation. It is recommended the Board of County Commissioners either approve the service charge rate for the fiscal year 2025 tax bill, tax year 2024 of 0.014750% or waive the annual service charge fee and instruct Finance and Budget to submit that rate to the Department of Assessments and Taxation for approval.
Is this fee the same as last year or is that changed due to interest rates?
Due to the amount of money that we're earning.
The benefits, but it's changed.
Any other questions?
None.
We would only keep this in here any longer than necessary. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve the service charge rate for the FY 2025 tax bill, tax year 2024 of 0.014750%.
Second.
A motion, the second that we approve the service charge rate for the FY 2025 tax bill, tax year 2024 of 0.014750. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? One opposed. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll see you next year?
Yes.
All right. That's good news. You hear that, Director Miller? She's still gonna be here next year.
I wrote down the book.
We've got it on camera, on tape. So that brings us to a work session, Office of the County Administrator, Calver County Board of Education, FY 2025 Budget.
Good morning Commissioners, Mark Willis here, County Administrator. Dr. Townsall has joined us for a quick course session with the Board of County Commissioners today. So he will join us and take over his presentation.
This is literally hot off the press.
I know. I was just saying it's warm.
If your hands are cold, you can put them on me. Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
Dr. Townsall, Mr. Johnson.
Good morning, County Administrator Mark Willis, members of the County Commission, President Hands, Dr. Andre Townsall, Superintendent of Calver County Public School. It is my goal to share with you our Board of Education's proposed fiscal year 25 budget. Appreciate the opportunity to share and I'll dive right into it. My first want to start with some staff highlights. Calver County Public School is a school district that we are extremely proud of. It's a top five school district in the state of Maryland right now. Our staff are an integral part of our success. We're pleased to share that 38 Calver County Public School teachers have National Board Certification. Eighty-eight percent of our Calver County Public School teachers are highly qualified. Seventy-one percent of them have taught over five years of those teachers and 58% have taught more than 10 years. When I came to Calver County, I've always championed academics, athletics, and the arts. I feel like all of our young people fall in one of those categories. Specifically discussing academics, as I shared previously, we're a top five performing school district in the state. Our English, Language Arts number, we're number one across the state two years in a row, fourth in the state in math grades three through eight, first in the state in American Government Passing Proficient. Graduation rate, four years of about 96%, one of the highest in the state and definitely above our state average. Our, all of our schools are national and metro area rankings for all four high schools through U.S. News and World Report. And all of Calver County Public Schools, high schools earn College Board's AP Honor Road Distinction. Looking at the District 2023 Maryland Report Card, it's important to share that all 22 schools saw improvement in average performance level in English Language Arts and 21 saw improvement in the percent proficient. Calver County Public Schools saw improvement in all summary groups and ELA had met annual targets in eight out of nine of those groups. Additionally, 16 schools saw improvement in the average performance level and percent proficient in mathematics. Calver County Public School continued to have one of the highest graduation rates in the state and showed improvement and met annual targets for every summary group for the four-year adjusted. Twelve of our schools are ranked in the 80th percentile or above in the state with five schools ranked in the 90th percentile or above. Seventeen of our schools saw improvement in the state percentile ranking with schools improving as much as 21%. Calver County Public School is second in the state for the percentage of schools earning a four or five star rating. And Calver County Public School is one of seven districts in the state that do not have any earnings of a one or two star rating. With regards to athletics, we have phenomenal athletes in multiple sports across our high schools. This slide highlights how many sports and schools were regional championships this past year and this year is just as amazing. You can see all of our high school young people performing academically. Additionally, the celebration continues with our state champions for the 2022-23 school year to include our Huntington High School Boys 110 and 300 hurdles, Northern High School Boys 113 and Girls 130 wrestling, Boys and Girls Indoor Track, Girls Indoor Shot Put and Girls Outdoor Shot Put and Discs, and Patuxent High School Girls Long Jump. With regards to the arts, this is only a snapshot of the many highlights and accomplishments earned by our talented students and dedicated staff. We are extremely proud of all of the hard work of our students and the tremendous support of our teachers and staff to not only set the bar, meet the bar, but exceed the bar and raise the bar. I'm sharing this because it's important to share that we are good stewards of the hard earned taxpayer dollars and this is the academic return on investment that the public schools provide into our community. I want to go to our fiscal year 25 budget priorities and share that first and foremost, we wanted to ensure a safe environment that supports the academic, emotional, and behavioral needs of our students, to provide curriculum, instructional resources, and support for our students, and most importantly, to also honor negotiated agreements and vendor commitments and to implement the requirements of the Blueprints for Maryland Futures, specifically talking about Pillar One, Pre-K Accreditation. Pillar Two, Development and Implementation of the Competitive Career Ladder, Minimum Salary of $60,000, Incentives and Payment for National Board Certification. Pillar Three, High Quality Instructional Material, Payment for AP Testing, Dual Enrollment Costs, Career Technical Education Certification, The Development of College and Career Readiness Pathways. And with regards to Pillar Four, Support for Students with Disabilities and ESOL, which is English Learners of Speakers of Other Languages, and the Family Engagement Coordinator. And last, to implement the new Calver County Public School Strategic Plan. One of the major challenges that went into a process when we developed this budget, we got hit with a curve ball. As you can see on the screen, the Calver County Public School is the only school system that realized a deduction in our state aid, about $22.5 million. And it's important to pay attention to this highlight at the bottom. If you can see that last row is unallocated funds from the state of about $22 million. So I believe our $22 million went right into that unallocated portion. So we're struggling with regards to our state aid. Also want to share in the next slide that Calver County Public School received the largest percentage reduction in money per student in the state of Maryland. I highlight this column and row because you can see that we received per pupil direct aid of $6,000 per student, which ranks 24th out of all school districts in the state of Maryland. In January, our original budget presentation indicated that we would receive a state aid comparable to fiscal year 24 in the revenue chart. However, Calver County Public School was notified the week before the budget presentation on January 25th that Calver County Public School was to receive $22.5 million less in state aid for fiscal year 24. And ladies and gentlemen, that was a shock to the system. Immediately, as a Superintendent of Calver County Public School, I sprung into conversation and collaboration with the Maryland State Department of Education, including our interim State Superintendent, Dr. Carrie Wright, the Assistant State Superintendent of Finance, Ms. Donna Gunney. Additionally, I talked with the Public School Superintendent Association of Maryland Executive Director Mary Pat Fannin, Clarence Crawford, the President of the State Board of Education, and Senator Mike Jackson, I actually went to his office in Annapolis. Also talked with our Calver County Commissioners, President Buddy Hands, Vice President Catherine Grasso, County Administrator Mark Willis, and members of his finance team on several occasions. Calver County Public School confirmed that our state aid would be reduced by $22.5 million down to the overall state aid revenue of only $86,991,385. In January, Calver County Public School identified immediately $5 million worth of cut so that our projected expenditure for fiscal year 25 was reduced to $10,450,000 over fiscal year 24. With the information of this unforeseen and unprecedented cut to our revenues, we returned to the drawing board to identify the best strategy possible to maintain the integrity of Calver County Public School as a top five school district in the state of Maryland. Our executive leadership team came back to the table to address the shortfall and included everything on the table, including the $5 million previously cut, in the effort to save as many staff as possible and minimizing the reductions in our classrooms. I also want to share.
Doc, excuse me, I don't want to, I just, I think you're on an extremely important point. So I want to kind of go back to the date of when you were notified of the shortfall. There's a, becoming a perception out here that this was known for years. And it has not. This is, this, this is brand new information to everyone, you know. So it's, it's like we're living in a, in a culture where somebody wants to point blame. This, when we talked last year, there was not on the horizon. No one said, hey, this is what's going to happen next year. You're gonna be, we would have approached this completely different. Even having that amount of time. And, and I can go into, I'm not going at this juncture, I can go into the history, going all the way back. But when you brought, I'm sorry, you, it was December?
No, we, my presentation was January 25th. I've learned of this cut on the Friday before the Thursday.
Now, now think about that. You're expected to run, how many millions of dollars?
250 million at minimum.
250 million dollar budget. The state is a vital partner in this. And to let you know, three months, four months before a budget? You work on budgets all year long. So I, I just want it clear out there that, that there was no preparing for this. There is this huge misconception that this blueprint was put in through the state. It is, it is the law of the land. Everybody worked on that for a couple of years. Committees put together, everybody prepped for that with the numbers, knowing that we had on hand, and then to come back and go, okay, boom, now we're going to cut it more. And the slide, can we go back to the, to the slide, um, where it chose to cut? I'm sorry, because I'm.
No worries.
Right here. Why? Why? Because we have LNG facility. Why was that not brought up the day before they put a shovel in the dirt? When that was, when that was presented to the county? People act like there was this, this big thing that, hey, you know, day one, you get this and this is. There was a sheet of paper, a printout from the state that said exactly what you were going to get for the following six years. And then it was going to be a new assessment. And at that time, you'll know what you're going to get going forward. And the fear was, because this was new, they were exporting to India and Japan. What if it didn't work out? What if those contracts didn't go? What if this, so there was nothing etched in stone. Everybody's acting like. And to go after, we're the third smallest jurisdiction, third, fourth in the state on that level? I mean, that is, that is so key. And there's another, um, when you have earlier with, with the ranking of increases to folks, we're coming in 24th? Wow. Wow. You know? And, and, and where was all of this from the state to help prepare that budget? So I, I just think when you hit that, to me, that was, that is the key thing in this whole discussion, basically almost why we're having this discussion. If they knew those numbers, did they just figure that out? Scott, you're a budget guy. Think you'd have just figured that out in like a week or so? No, months in the planning. This is not a mistake. Why were we just known this late into the, into the budget process? And now everybody, because we live in a culture, it's somebody's fault. You know, and they want to point this finger. Been having a finger pointed at me for 10 years, several of them. I'll, I'll jump on a grenade. It's not a problem. But this, you didn't see it, right? No information to you. I had never been given any information. We had an outstanding budget director who became County Administrator, Terry Shannon. Terry Shannon knew this thing backwards, forwards, upside down. They never presented to her or his other. So I just, a lot of people are going to watch this presentation today because of this. There was no, you know, hidden things on our side, you know, um, nobody. And I won't. But that is unbelievable, to drop that bomb with blueprint to be activated in what, three months, four months becomes the law? So I didn't want to stop you, but I just thought that that was extremely important.
So before you, before you get back, just want to reiterate, we have, together, we've met with every state agency involved, some of them multiple times, trying to work through this issue. We worked through our Southern Maryland delegation to no resolve. We have asked for a meeting with the Governor to talk about this, to try to figure it out. So far, he's refused to meet with us. So here we are.
So Dr. Townsall, you said you met with a lot of different people in your talks with the 22 and a half million dollar cut and the unallocated money. Your conversations, what was their explanations in your conversations with all these people?
In short, the budget is moving forward as is. So it's up to us to respond. So the conversation is, what do you think you can cut? Which, you know, puts the ball back in our court. So as a school district, what we're doing is, you know, I, I showed you the academic return on investment of us receiving what we've gotten in the past, you know, couple of years. But now, right now, this is a strategic inflection point that we're at. Because where we are with that point of this here, we're either going to loop or root or the goal is how do at minimum equal a greater value. So this is what it is.
But no explanation on that unallocated money?
No, sir.
Or where it was going.
Okay, thank you.
The only response we get back is, you're living in a wealthy community, raise taxes. That's what we're told.
Uh, thank you. Get back to our words. Okay, so here's our approach, ladies and gentlemen. Calver County Public Schools' approach to respond, we don't want to react. And we want to respond to this strategic inflection point that we're at. And the first thing was to protect the classroom as much as possible by minimizing impact to students and minimizing impact to our staff. Scrutinize the expenditure budget request. Ladies and gentlemen, if you had the opportunity to even look yesterday with all of our members of the Board of Education, every director. every director in Calver County Public School, all one hundred and forty-four pages, page by page, looking at what we can cut, flipping over every rock. Why am I sharing that? Because I want, um, to, I, I, I want to earn trust from the community that we're doing everything possible to maintain the integrity of Calver County Public School, and also to ensure that there is no waste in our expenditure. Every member of our Board of Education on yesterday approved unanimously for what we can push forward, um, to, to recommend for the board, so I'm happy to have those conversations. I also wanna share that, um, without knowing of a twenty-two point five million dollar shortfall and meeting with our, all of our directors, there was about fifty-some positions, you know, of how we can improve academic achievement, but only one position was approved out of that request, and that position was the ESOL Family Engagement Coordinator, and that's a mandatory position via blueprint. Additionally, we have thirteen positions that will not move from grants to local budget. Specifically, in our Rose Grant, that's the reduction of the over-identification of special education, there are six letters coaches there. With regards to Maryland Leads, there are three mentor teachers, one project-based learning specialist, one principal mentor, and one coordinator of Maryland Leads and Blueprint for Maryland's Future, those positions will not be moved over into our general fund. And I also wanna share that we collaborated, uh, with all of our administrative staff on cost-reduction ideas. So when we realized that we were gonna get the, uh, receive, uh, negative twenty-two point five million dollars, every principal, anybody that was a supervisor administrator, we said, hey, every, uh, all hands on deck, let's pitch in and see what's possible to kinda have the best thinking around what to do.
Dr. Townsell.
Yes, ma'am.
In your budget, are there pay increases and COLAs for teachers?
Yes, ma'am, it's the trailing two point seven-five percent of the, um, of the five and a half percent, um, increase the salary via step and the already previously negotiated COLA in our teacher contract.
What is the COLA percentage, please?
Uh, uh, one point two-five percent.
One point two-five percent, and what is the salary increase?
Uh, the one-step increase was.
One-step?
Yes, ma'am, our.
Per teacher?
Trailing two point seven-five percent salary increase.
Okay, so one-step increase for your teachers, and a COLA at one point two-five percent.
And that was negotiated in the contract, right?
Yes, so we budgeted so we can ensure that we pay our negotiated agreements. Um, and it's important to share, all of our contracts expire June thirtieth, so we're in negotiations right now with all of our bargaining units. So to see what the next four years look like, and they're, all options are on the table with them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Where does that put you with the blueprint requirement?
Uh, so, uh, great question, so, one thing that's very important is July one, two thousand twenty-six, we must have a minimum starting salary of sixty thousand dollars by law. The problem is, um, our neighboring county, for example, St. Mary's Public School, already are starting July one twenty-four with a minimum salary of sixty thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, so the competition for educators put us already at a disadvantage. Uh, they're not spacing a reduction in state aid, they're moving forward as usual, and, uh, they were able to close on a new minimum starting salary immediately.
What's the date on sixty thousand minimum for teachers again, please?
July one twenty-six.
July one, okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, and I do wanna share, prior to having the information of the reduction of our state aid, we were trying to do that as soon as possible. Um, but again, all, all options are on the table, um, knowing that there's some monies and cuts that we have to make. So I wanna share this, our fund balance as of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three was the total amount of twenty-eight point eight million dollars. Um, using, I wanna share this, using our entire fund balance is not a fiscally responsible option to resolve the revenue shortfall for our school system. Our current fund balance is less than the Government Finance Officers Association, GFAL, recommended minimum of at least two months of operating costs, which equates to sixteen point seven percent of the total expenditure budget. In addition, the Calver County Public School fund balance equates to nineteen point six school days of operating costs and ten point nine percent of fiscal year twenty-four total operating cost. As you can see from the graph on this slide, the majority of our fund balance are either assigned or committed funds with approximately seven point three million of our fund balance unassigned. The purpose of fund balance.
Dr. Townsell, can I stop you for one second right there?
Yes, ma'am.
So I have a paper ending June thirtieth of a fund balance of thirty-two, six, seventy-seven, eighty-two. Can you explain the difference between the thirty-two, six, seventy-seven, eighty-two compared to the twenty-eight point eight?
I'll be glad to you, the twenty-eight point eight million is for the general fund, the difference is for the food service fund. And that's a separate fund, and we must keep those funds completely segregated from the general fund.
So we don't have food service in your budget, current budget line item?
We will be, um, preparing a food service fund budget for FY twenty-five, but that fund balance is not available for the general fund.
But still part of your total balance?
Total balance.
We, we cannot use food service fund balance for the general fund.
Still part of your total budget, correct?
It's tot- part of the total budget, but it's not part of the total general fund budget.
And four million dollars is, what, what, how many months' worth of operating cost is that?
Uh, I'd be happy to check, I don't have that number readily available.
And when is the school system ever needed two months' worth of operating capital? I know you both are new, but in the history of the school system, when have they ever needed two months' worth of operating capital?
Great question, but I do wanna share the strategy with our fund balance with that same question at hand that I asked.
What, I mean, you raised it in the slide, I'm just asking the question, I understand some organization says you should have it, but you're a government-funded school system, I'm just asking the question, why you think you need two months' worth of operating capital?
Well, I wanna share, we're using our fund balance, we're going to u- I'm proposing, out of the twenty-eight million, that we use twenty million of our fund balance.
But you put a slide in here that says you need two months' worth.
Absolutely, but I, I think.
So why do you think you need two months' worth?
No, I, I think my purpose of sharing that is that we follow the recommendation of best practices from our governa- governor, government finance association, uh, operations association, so just best practices as a school leader.
And what happens if you don't have it?
Well, that's what I'm gonna share on the next slide, so one of the reasons to have fund balances to reduce the risk and protects against the following disruptors, for example, significant revenue reduction. So thank God we have it, because negative twenty-two from the state, thank God, in the past, the county has generously funded our school system where we now can at least save ourselves for this upcoming year with some of the emergencies.
And what are you gonna do next year?
That's, that's the great question, collaborate with our county administrators and, um, figure out how we can maintain the integrity of Calver County Public Schools, because the bottom line is, we can't generate any other, any more funds. There's no revenue, we're not a business, we only get what we're told. Um, so it's a hardcore reorganization of how we do business.
Dr. Townsell, uh, you have fourteen million committed from your fund balance, and then assigned seven million four hundred fifty-eight thousand four hundred and seventy-six, for a total of twenty-one thousand, tw- I'm sorry, twenty-one million four hundred fifty-eight thousand four hundred and seventy-six. What is the seven million assigned to, and what is the fourteen million committed to?
Great question, um, I'll share this piece, knowing of the twenty-one million that you just shared of committed and assigned, I stripped it down to the bare bones and say, I'm using twenty million of this right now. Um, so for committed absences or other, I know, um, committed absences.
That includes compensated absences, uh, there, and lease agreements that we have, uh, and a variety of other types of assignments and reserves, uh, including health insurance and several others, they're all detailed in the audit report.
So your lease agreements aren't, I'm sorry, your lease agreements aren't in your annual budget?
The upcoming portion, the upcoming year's costs, upcoming single year's costs are, yes, but not the future years beyond the upcoming fiscal year.
Don't your contracts have language in there that say funds available?
We have a variety of lease contracts, uh, and typically, they don't, uh, include an easy, uh, bailout option.
Guys, to piggyback on, uh, Commissioner Hans's point, so when I, when I first came on, we were bleeding about eight million a year. We hadn't had the Dominion contract, and it was a combination of a few things, highway user funds had been taken away, it was about five million dollars worth, and then there was the teacher pension shift. Um, you guys know we're here in the state, but all twenty-four jurisdictions had to take on the burden now of funding that pension. For us, it ended up being about another five million, so that ten million dollars put us in a hole. And so they were taking fund balance, and you know, the rule of thumb when you do this is, you don't use fund balance to balance, because it's not sustainable. The alarming point is this, and we're going to have the same exact issue over here as well. Um, with such a large, like Commissioner Hans said, such a large, um, use of fund balance, is anybody from the state saying, okay, we're taking twenty-two million this year, offering up what their contribution's going to be next year? Because if it's this twenty-two million shortfall this year, finding out in January, what, what, what might we find out next January? I mean, you know, we're, we were sitting here last year not thinking that this was ever a possibility, will there be even a bigger shocker next year? So, so are they saying, hey, uh, this is just one of many? Or this is a one-time, or, I mean, is there any dialogue of any expectations?
It's a great question, the answer to that question is no, uh, but what we're doing as a school district, we're starting July one, working on fiscal year twenty-six budget. So that makes, it puts us in a proactive stance where I can ask those tough questions immediately. So I'm not waiting until January two thousand twenty-five to know that we're gonna receive potentially the same state aid this year that we, uh, next year that we received this year. Um, uh, and what this does is gives, i- it buys us time, it gives us a year to maintain the integrity of Calver County Public School while we redesign what fiscal year twenty-six looked like. Um, very challenging stuff, I, I'd be honest with you, I mean, that's twenty-two million dollars, about ten percent of our budget, man, so, and.
What's disturbing is, look around the rest of the jurisdictions. St. Mary's County took twenty-four thousand, and the other twenty-two got an increase. I mean, it's, so it, it seems to be very specific, so it wasn't a mistake on their point, you know, that's what I keep going back to. They didn't just wake up and go, mm-mm, I'll not believe that, it's too specific. It's not like there was a few other jurisdictions, like, we weren't the only ones. You know, and, I mean, saying, like, saying, St. Mary's, twenty-four thousand is insignificant. Um, but you said, what, ten percent of your budget? How somebody said, hey, this is gonna be impactful, they need as much time to prep as possible. It's completely reckless and irresponsible to drop that in January like that, knowing, they, they know, they've forgotten more about budgets than we'll ever know, they, you know, they're constantly working on budgets. It's just like I said, I just don't, I don't buy the, uh, I said before, it's, it wasn't an accident. So that's why I'm wondering, okay, you know what you're doing this year, what are you doing to us next year?
Dr. Townsell, um, the assigned seven million and the assigned, and the committed fourteen million, I would definitely require a total breakdown to the penny where those funds are going to. Also, throw in there the difference for the food services, with these, uh, tight times, I can't approve anything in good conscience unless I have a line-by-line budget, and I know where everything is going to. That's what we're doing to ourselves in the county, and we have really tightened as well, and I appreciate, I think this budget is maybe seven million less you're wanting from us, or maybe three million, I don't know, I've seen so many. You're requesting of us ten million, and I think that's down from seventeen, then thirteen million, and now it's ten million. So, um, we have to do this timely, we have to have the time to study this. Are there any contracts or work orders already assigned to your fund balance? Um, I had heard that, and I, I don't think that's legal to do, but.
Wait, what do you, I don't know what you mean by that.
In your fund balance, you have committed monies of fourteen million, have you already signed contracts or work orders to commit that money for this coming year? Have you already done that? You haven't, okay. Okay, so that's a rumor that's been dis- dispelled. Okay, thank you very much.
No problem.
Thank you.
Our goal is to be as transparent as possible, so thank you for sharing that, that's news to me today, so I just learned that today.
Okay, I appreciate it, okay.
No problem. Uh, so I just wanna share, uh, although, uh, it is good that, yeah, I'll just say, thank you for supporting Calver County Public Schools in the past for us to allow to develop a fund balance, because we have monies to use, uh, for this rainy day. So understanding our total revenue shortfall, the cuts to our budget thus far, and additional cuts of three million nine hundred forty-two thousand four hundred ninety-one dollars, we have determined that we will use twenty million dollars of fund balance. We are requesting an increase from our county commissioners, ten million dollars over fiscal year twenty-four, which will close our revenue shortfall and minimize disruption to our organization, students, staff, and families alike. All stakeholders of Calver County Public Schools deserve the best education system possible. With this recommendation, I'm confident that we can main, we will maintain student achievement and academic excellence while also being a great place to have a career.
So, Dr. Townsell, if I can, you said you have a revenue shortfall of thirty-seven, five?
Yes, sir.
So twenty-two of that is from the state production. Where's the other fifteen for?
Salary benefit cost increases plus general inflation cost increases. And the one additional staff member. And also a reduction in, uh, revenue anticipated or budgeted for Care First Health Insurance refund.
Run that by me again, I'm sorry.
Also a reduction in the, uh, projected revenue from Care First, it's our health insurance carrier, and they provide, uh, the, this year and last fiscal year, they provide a health insurance refund, uh, for the district based on favorable claims.
But we did give that back, correct?
We gave a portion of back to the, uh, collective bargaining units in accordance with the collective bargaining agreements, yes.
So what portion do you give back?
It's specified in the contract, I believe it was approximately eight hundred thousand dollars in the form of a insurance, uh, holiday for current employees and retirees.
And what was your total rebate?
This year, I believe it was approximately one point nine million dollars.
So you had one point one million left over, and you, you budget that money?
We budgeted, I believe it's, uh, in the neighborhood of seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, or close to one million dollars this fiscal year for that. Claims were more favorable than the budgeted, and the revenue is no, is not guaranteed from year to year.
No, that's why I'm surprised you would work it, put it in your budget.
Why put it in your budget when you have a fund balance of healthcare, four million?
Yeah, if you don't know you're gonna. It's an unknown thing, and why would you build your budget on an unknown revenue?
Based on our, uh, recent prior experience.
They used to put that in a certain pocket, so you used to carry X amount of dollars, so you're not doing that anymore. They used to carry the health insurance pocket, you would carry X amount of dollars in case it was a shortfall, and if it was over, then you might.
No, he's got that, they've got that in fund balance, he, he, they're budgeting a million dollars that they intend to be getting every year from fund balance as part of their budget.
Oh, so you're adding a million to your budget for a potential shortfall?
No.
For FY twenty-five, zero dollars are included in the budget for, uh, the health insurance refund.
They're budgeting the rebate as revenue.
For the current fiscal year, but for next fiscal year, none is included.
Okay, but that's what I was saying, you know, uh, normally you would put that in, not in a revenue category, but in a fund balance.
He's got that in fund balance.
Fund balance, four million.
Four million dollars to cover a shortfall, but they've been budgeting a million dollars of revenue every year.
Right, but, but the four million, that's not dedicated just to health insurance, is it?
It's assigned.
Health insurance, uh, and dental insurance.
Okay, so that is that, that is that pocket, okay, so the additional one million. You, instead of putting it in there to make five million, it went to the general, your general fund, basically, is that correct?
That's correct, and it was budgeted in there this fiscal year and, uh, is not, and was last year, but not for next year.
So you were anticipating asking us without the state shortfall for fifteen million dollars?
Previously, yes.
Yes, sir.
To cover salaries?
Yes, and also recommendation to ensure that we remain, you know, one. Yes, and also recommendation to ensure that we remain, you know, one of the highest performing school districts.
I hear you, Dr. Townsall. I'm just trying to be clear on what the 15 million was for. I'm shocked that you're budgeting health insurance rebates.
It's not in the fiscal year 25 budget.
I, I hear you, Dr., Mr. Johnson, but you've been doing that. Because you're, you've used that as your shortfall to cover. So you've been building that into your budget as revenue in the past. And maybe that's a good accounting practice, but me as a conservative person that I am, I would never use anticipated rebates in my, to build my budget. That's, that's a windfall in my mind. If you get it, it's a windfall. If you don't, then you got to go into fund balance to cover it. That's what, that's what I'm trying to get at, so, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Dr. Townsall, I just wanted to point out one thing on this slide. Your fund balance use is actually 21,458,476. You're, having said that, your increase request from us should be 8,541,524. So every penny counts. So if y'all would take a look at that, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. As you can see from the proposed fiscal year 25 revenue, including the additional $10 funding request from the county commissioners, totals. Expenditure recap. The recap of our fiscal year 25 exposed expenditure is 273,468,409. This include additional cuts that have yet to be determined. The overall increase of 2.5% is below the Consumer Price Index, CPI. And most of the increase is attributable to salary and benefits. Significant increase in other instructional costs. There was, is a result of costs being moved into other instructional cost category because of the end of ESSR, the Elementary and Secondary Emergency Relief Fund. Revenues from the previous slide minus expenditure on this slide show the 20 million dollar revenue shortfall, which will be taken from Calvert County Public School fund balance. Blueprint costs were included to be embedded into the budget. The final 5% of the salary increase for teacher costs, 5,350,000. However, in Calvert, we also provided the same 5.5% to other employees not identified in the blueprint. The expansion of our four-year-old pre-K program included 1.5 teachers and 12 assistants since we already had a number of half-day four-year-old programs. The costs remained even, though we are not expanding any more programs this year. Calvert County Public School will continue to pay for advanced placement assessment, AP, career technical education certification, and dual enrollment costs. Based on college and career readiness, pillar three of the blueprint, designation or the finalization of AP pathway. Calvert County Public School will be limiting these costs in the future. Our dual enrollment costs continue to grow. Calvert County Public School has 18 students in the College of Southern Maryland Calvert County Public School Early College Program. However, 65 students have applied for early college for the fiscal year 25 school year, which will increase the cost for dual enrollment. It is important to understand that Calvert County Public School determined if we limit the number of students who can access early college in the future. National Board Certification costs are shared between the county and state for teachers defined in the blueprint. The cost will increase as our teachers complete their National Board Certifications and eventually receive their salary increases for the maintenance of certification. The blueprint requires school systems to support students who are English language learners and students with disabilities. English speakers for other languages, ESOL, and special education program costs include the salary and benefits for our staff in these programs. These can be found in either the instruction or special education budget pages. Currently, the state formula provides the full amount of workforce development costs, which is 924,000.
So, Dr. Townsall, are you, in this slide, are you saying that blueprint is requiring you to spend 33, 34 million dollars? On ESOL and special education programming costs? In one year?
Yes, that's in one year.
That you haven't been spending before?
No, that's why we have asterisks for the special education programming funding. That, we incur the special education costs even before blueprint, but blueprint requires continuation of those costs.
So why do you have pay us spending in there?
Pardon me?
Why do you have the pay us spending in there?
Because we wanted to identify continued blueprint costs.
But you've been paying for that. It's not new.
That's correct.
I, I think I get what you're saying. You want to see it broken out of special education, is that what you're sharing?
Yeah, if you've been paying it. I don't understand why, what you've done in the past, you're calculating as a blueprint cost. You've already been doing that before blueprint, right?
Right, the goal, the purpose of this slide is to show some of the costs that we're incurring with blueprint. Some are continued costs, and then we also have some new upcoming costs, which will be identified in just a slide or two.
So ESOL is a recurring cost also?
Yes.
Yes, sir, and in this upcoming year, it'd be an extra position for that mandated by the blueprint, which is a coordinator for that position.
And didn't we expand the pre-K program this current year that we're in?
Yes, but we're not expanding moving forward, we're maintaining.
So what's the 723,000 for?
That's the cost in this year's budget.
The budget we're in right now?
Yes.
Are you experiencing a teacher shortfall?
When you say teacher shortfall, you're talking about human capital, like?
Vacancies.
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am, not only across the state, but across the country. As a matter of fact, I'm a graduate of the School of Education at Howard University, and I also serve on their Board of Visitors. And what I've learned is that, um, young people going into the profession is at an all-time low. So people are not choosing the field of education, and that's across many colleges across the country.
Would it be possible in view of that? I, I think we have about 29 certified teachers at the BOE. Would it be possible in a crunch like this that we could put some of those teachers back in the classroom?
I understand what you're saying. So I, I share a global, Calvert County, by the grace of God, have been very fortunate with regards to filling vacancies. We've now moving forward, especially with the competition with our neighboring Southern Maryland school districts. It may be a strategy in the, in the future, but we've been very blessed so far to have our teaching supported.
Yeah, you might, you might want to think about that, because there's 29 cert, certified teachers at the BOE. And it seems like we could maybe get some of them back in the classroom if we're experiencing a shortfall.
I understand.
Think about it.
I think that's a great suggestion. I will share, everything's on the table at Calvert County Public School, especially as we move forward. So all suggestions are taken. We've toiled that idea previously, even with our own Board of Education. And so far, I think they're satisfied with the approach that we have now, especially when talking about possible attrition and reduction in force. You want to go to those specialist positions and put them in place.
So how many vacancies do you have today? Total?
Off the top of my head, I don't want to misspeak, um, as a matter of fact, I told you.
Tony Navarro, Chief Operations Officer. It's in the twenties, Commissioner Hans.
25?
I will confirm that number and get it to you.
So isn't that, that's, uh, just in my rough math, that's, I don't know, 1.7 million dollars in savings? Salary savings?
It's possible.
There you go, I found you some money.
I'll get that number to you, Mr. Hans.
Please.
You know, guys, I just want to add in this, you know, unfortunately, people fail to recognize that it's a business. It shouldn't be, but it is. Once you put dollars and cents in there, it becomes a business. Passion gets put into it and everything else like that. I have the fortunate, uh, view to be at the school pretty much every day. There are some phenomenal people. There really is. It's not some political thing. I'm not running for office here today. It's not like that. Every time you say something, people, this weekend, you know, because I knew this was coming, you know, you're really more reflective. And I'm watching a lot of life lessons go out to kids in, in sports and athletics and stuff. And, um, and I'm thinking the whole time, you know, unfortunately, you know, kids out there, they don't care about this. And unfortunately, teachers shouldn't have to care about this either. They should just be able to just go to work. And unfortunately, I got thinking globally, as Steve Williams used to always say, politicians make up budgets. They're not business people. They're not accountants. They don't have finance backgrounds. And they make these decisions based on interest groups. And I got thinking, you know, we got on the table a 3 billion tax increase coming to this state if the service tax goes in. And all these other taxes and, and home assessments and all this stuff. And you, and at some point, you know, I understand the frustration of the public out there go, when are you going to stop twisting my arm? Because I'm doing everything you've asked me to do. Like you said, with the school numbers are coming back positive. We have a fantastic school system. Anybody who would say different isn't paying attention. Unfortunately, the state's making it more and more a business. And that's going back to my thing, you know, are, are they saying, okay, we did this to you? What are we going to do next? Because you are starting to talk about the integrity of that school system now. It does run on money. And it, and, you know, and instead of it being treated like a business in respect of that, you know, when we put the funding formula in. The best thing the superintendent said at the time was now he knew what he had to work with. Before it was this back and forth of, well, what are you going to do? And what are we going to cut? And it was all this funding formula made it real simple. You know, and things ran smoothly for a few years because he knew, he had the courtesy of knowing what he had to budget. And going back to, unfortunately, you don't know what you have to work with because you don't know the way their past practices, what you could walk into in January. So I just, I just wanted to say, you know, on a personal note, just where I watch it firsthand. I just sit there quietly, watch the interaction, and, um, we have a very good school system. We truly do.
We do.
So, yes, so just to clarify Commissioner Grasso's question on teachers' salaries and pensions, what have you. So I'm going back to the March 14th. So negotiations cost 1% COLA for CEA and caseworkers is 1.8. Additional funding from the county. So you're saying that, can you explain, so what, what's the teachers getting, support staff getting, and administrators getting? So you said the teachers were getting 1.25 COLA and one step. How about the support staff and administrators?
That's, that's the trailing, so that's what we agreed to give them last year. So we're looking, so what I'm sharing is, there's something we were mandated to do by the blueprint. But in good faith, and because we're a blessed community, we all took care of everybody in the system outside of being mandated. So that's the total of everyone, taking care of everyone in our system that we agreed to with memorandums of understanding that fiscal year.
Okay. And, uh, and in your budget priorities, the first sentence was a safe environment. And there's no resource officers included in this budget?
Yes, it is. Two additional resource officers, and that's through a memorandum of understanding with our Sheriff's Department.
And that's going to get us, what, we still need six more to complete it, correct?
Yes, sir. So that's going to give us the two additional officers, working closely with Deputy Lieutenant or Lieutenant Payne and Sheriff Cox. So that's in the budget.
And any talks with your CIP for next year?
Capital Improvement Plan. We discussed yesterday our capital outlay in our budget to see where we could cut, went line by line with every member of our Board of Education. There's nothing to chop out of that capital outlay budget. I think it's important to keep Northern Middle School on the books, you know, the state is going to fund majority of that. But everything's on the table still, you know, nothing's final, and always open to collaboration and suggestions.
Okay, thank you.
Can you give me a breakdown of your 15 million dollar ask again?
So initially, it was 15 million, so, but what we cut out of there, for example, was. I have it in the PowerPoint here. Can I get to it? So for example.
That's fine.
Sure.
Okay, but I'll answer that question in detail for you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. I can move forward? You guys okay if I move forward?
Good, good.
New blueprint costs included in the budget is the pre-K accreditation and the family engagement coordinator for ESOL programming. Additional impacts not currently budgeted, we just spoke about that. I do want to share, Calvert County Public School has included in fiscal year 25 budget, the trailing 2.75% increase previously agreed upon. And also included funding towards a step for our employees. The approximate cost of a step increase is 3,480,000. As you know, Calvert County Public School, the Calvert Education Association, and the Calvert Association of Education Supports, uh, uh, Support Specialists, Support Personnel are currently negotiated. The system approximates that a 1% COLA will cost 1.9 million dollars. It is important that the Board of Education consider a minimum starting salary of 60,000. While the blueprint designate this as a July 1/26 start, St. Mary's County just settled with a minimum starting salary of 60,500,000, as well as other counties. Who are moving forward with this similar minimum starting salary. Calvert County Public School needs to stay competitive to bring new teachers to Calvert County. The increase, to increase salary for all certified teachers who currently, whose current salary is less than 60,000 to hire a new teacher at this rate. Will cost our system between 1.8 and 2 million dollars, depending on the number of new teachers. Finally, Calvert County Public School is required to implement a career ladder that must be submitted for approval by July 1, 2024, and implemented July 1, 2025. The career ladder must incent current teachers to opt into the career ladder. The approximated cost to implement their career ladder, we're working on that range now, and that range is about 2.2 million to 2.4 million dollars. The total cost will be finalized at the conclusion of our negotiations. The ongoing cost of our National Board Certification cost would increase fiscal year 25 to 708,200 at a minimum. Any of these would require additional funding from the county commissioners on the equivalent in budget reductions or a combination of the both.
So Dr. Townsall, did St. Mary's County also implement their career ladder effective July 1 of '24?
They're moving forward.
Anthony Navarro, Chief Operations Officer. Yes, sir, Commissioner Hans, they are implementing that career ladder salary schedule July 1, 2024.
And they did all of that and covered their increased cost for next year for less than 10 million dollars? If I read the paper right, St. Mary's County gave their school board less than 10 million dollars, and they've already covered blueprint, ladder, career ladder, and starting salaries. And you need 10 million dollars, and you haven't covered any of that. Do you understand why we're so frustrated and we're asking so many questions?
Yeah, yes, sir. I think it's important to share a couple of things. One, they didn't receive the 22.5 million.
But you've covered that with your fund balance. We're only talking about what you're asking for an increase.
100%. Um, I do believe, um, our budget book is available. We went page by page, line by line. More than happy to continue that process and identify what appropriate adjustments must be made. Because we need the support of our county commissioners, no doubt about that. And, um, my goal as the superintendent is not only to do that, but also provide the best system possible for our young people to be productive in our community. We're, we're open, living and breathing every single day to ensure that we can get to something that our, not only county commissioners support, but our community as a whole support.
Guys, what's the health of your OPEV account these days?
They're at like 80%, they're like we are, 90%, something like that. They're like us.
Okay, just, just, just checking.
Dr. Townsall, you know, I met recently with the school bus contractors.
Yes, sir.
Did you know that Calvert County requires almost 14,000 of special equipment on a county bus that is not required by the state or federal government? And it's not required by any other county in the state of Maryland?
Yes, sir.
You know that?
I've learned that by meeting with all of the leadership of our contractors. That was a concern brought to me when I met with them earlier in the year.
Sir, are we going to go back to just meeting state standards?
I believe very, uh, again, everything's on the table. I mean, I'll share this. Um, prior to my arrival, one thing that we did with our bus contractors, for example, bus drivers, we went, we we give them a mandatory eight hour pay. Um, the reality is, and I say this respectfully, especially in a crisis, they only work six and a half hours a day. So there's, you know, an hour or an hour and a half of guaranteed money that's going out. So I believe everything's on the table um to not only tighten our belts, but to ensure that we can maintain the integrity of Calver County Public Schools. So I did learn of that. Um, and that was to ensure we had the safest safest buses on the road and the most
It's just for lights and fancy wheels.
I understand a hundred percent. That was not a done.
So if a contractor's bus goes out, he can't go buy one off a lot because it doesn't meet your specifications and they have to special order them. So it's and for they told me fourteen thousand dollars per bus. I don't know how many buses we have running up and down Calver County roads. But they said it's all Calver County with fancy wheels and special pretty lights.
Yep, and and bouncy seats, the we got air conditioners, cameras, GPS.
Well, I think those are requirements. I'm, I think what they're talking about is just stuff that somebody decided they wanted to see on the buses.
To answer your question, I did learn of that, you know, while looking to flip over every rock. Um, so everything's on the table.
I just think it's important, uh, and maybe you have, but I think it's important that in the budget situation that we're in, that we meet with all of our team players. The bus contractors had several objections that day for where we're spending money we don't need to spend. Uh, we hear from teachers all the time. We're not budget analysts. We haven't gone through your budget, found this stuff. It's because teachers call us and tell us you're wasting money.
No, can you say specifically the waste? It'd be, I mean, and the reason why I say that respectfully, yesterday,
Did you meet with them?
Absolutely. I have a teachers advisory council and we take comments and questions all the time and we answer those questions. Now, if someone said, hey, this is waste right here, what is that? As a man of integrity, I'm gonna say, hey, is this waste or not? So and I believe previously Commissioner Grasso, Vice President Grasso shared of a rumor. You know, so it's possible in some cases, some things are rumors. Uh, but in good faith, as superintendent of Calver County Public Schools, I want this to be right and correct and, you know, error free. So if someone's saying there's waste here, waste there, put it on the table and let's figure it out. There's nothing to hide. Um, I encourage everyone to potentially watch yesterday's budget session uh where we put every item on page by page um uh with our elected officials in our community and answering to that. Um, so I don't, you know, I I wish I could hide as big as I am. I can't hide anywhere, you know?
Us neither.
The common theme from the teachers seems to be the ask gets more and more every year, but their salaries aren't in line with that ask. They want to know where that money was going. This time last year, we requested a performance audit. And if we had that performance audit in place right now, we might not be in this situation or or as deep in this situation as we currently are.
A twenty two million dollar cut from the state?
No. No.
What do you mean? And I'm saying that respectfully. You said the situation.
We may have had a return of investment that would have lessened that debt is what I'm getting at.
I understand, okay.
But we were fought tooth and nail all along the way on getting that done. So here we are again, same situation, only worse at this point. But had we had the performance audit, things could be a whole lot different right now. So we need to talk about that in the very near future.
And I do believe you guys put the request in at the state and I believe it's in process to my understanding.
We had to go that route because we didn't get the cooperation from the Board of Ed.
What we rather do is do that locally together. What we didn't want to do is go to the state, but we were left no other alternatives.
And I do want to share, uh, just for the public, that's not my decision
Nope, that is not your decision.
To trigger a performance audit. So I just want to be clear.
No, all you can do is influence that decision.
But I I want to be clear. I work the best interest of of Calver County Public Schools and the community as a whole and I won't do anything to harm anybody, any agency. We're all, this is team Calver. I've been preaching that since I've gotten here and I believe my actions have shown on team Calver County.
I think it would be helpful to show the public what a twenty two million dollar cut would look like.
Sure.
Because right now you're covering it with fund balance, which we appreciate, but public needs to see what that looks like. Maybe our governor needs to see what that would look like to Calver County schools.
Commissioners, that's a, that's a good point. You know, previous superintendent, I look, I and nobody please twist my words. I am not advocating for this or anything. But when back during that time, I I actually had a board member say to me, not this board, but didn't believe that teacher cuts had happened before. And I said, it wasn't even that long ago and I don't want to misquote him. I believe he told me it was over fifty teachers. Now, that's significant. That's, you know, but so Commissioner Hans's point, that's what and and I mean with our budgets, everything, that's what happens with significant cuts like that. Um, you just don't, can't fund anything anymore. So that is a, that is a very valid point because if if this amount of fund balance is required every year, well, obviously that's not sustainable. So what is a budget going to look like? That 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 is on that, on the level of funding that can be provided. How many teachers is that? What programs is that? I mean,
And next year you're going to need thirty million dollars.
I can share verbally what that'll look like just as an FYI.
Well, I remember classes cut. I remember certain classes cut where and now that formula came in for a certain amount of teachers is what classes you got. And um that was, that was a really uh big, big rift down my way because, you know, we lost students. Um, because, you know, the it hasn't had a redistricting in a long time. So when Tuckson and I lost students, they actually lost classes too. It's well, you know, maybe some of it could be bust or what have you, but but those kids didn't have the same opportunity as a kid might have somewhere else because of those cuts.
I'll share the, so if you, two hundred and twenty, excuse me, twenty two million dollars, I mean, if you think of a hundred thousand dollars per FTE, that's two hundred and twenty teachers. Two hundred, so that's at least what we have, ten teachers per building. There's no way in the world I can do that. Cut ten people per building? Cut middle school athletics? You know, cutting um or 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 not honoring our bargaining agreements, it's no way in the world. I mean, all of those things were on the table and as a leader of this school system, there's no way in the world I can pull the trigger on that. You know, so that's why, you know, humbly, I'm coming with an ask, you know, I don't want to do those things. And also did not want to um scare our community with the rumor mill of saying they're going to cut twenty two hundred teachers.
Right, because that's what happens. It the little tidbit and then it blows up to like we were saying earlier. I mean, somebody will take a tidbit from today and go, they're going to cut two hundred twenty teachers.
Four hundred, it'll be four hundred by next week.
Yeah, right, instead of truly following what's happening.
Absolutely. So the goal and the messaging was to keep calm and do the work in the best interest of the community without scaring and people, you know, now people resigning because of a rumor and you know, I'm trying to get us top five and stay top five, if not one, two or three. You know, we, because the talent that we have with the educators we have, we can do that. But here's a new challenge. You know, and a challenge that we've not seen coming, you know, I I didn't have a year to prepare for this. I had five weeks, if that, you know. So, you know, I don't wish it was easy. I wish I was better at this point. And by the grace of God, I'm gonna do everything in my power to to learn as much as I can, uh, continue to collaborate as much as possible, work collectively and just try to figure this out. You know, no one's coming to save us. I've learned that. Um, so thank you, I would share, for being generous and funding the school system prior to my arrival because I had something to go to, to to, you know, tread water for you. Uh, but the reality is, uh, tomorrow's coming. Um, so we all have to put our heads together. I'm not, my feet are not dug in the ground. My heels are not dug in and saying, this what we're going to do and you know, I'm not saying that. I'm saying, hey, help me, you know, because no one knows. There's no playbook.
And Dr. Townsend, um, I mean, I know we ask tough tough questions. I'm sure there are people out there thinking god knows what, but look, uh, we don't have a print and press and we have a financial responsibility and this board is not going to let the system fail. You know, we are not going to let the school system regress. Uh, it's just that, uh, we have to be able to answer to the citizens that we've looked under every single rock to make sure that that money's being spent effectively. Uh, you know, as Commissioner Grasso, her math has already got it down to eight point five. You're going to have a million and a half in salary savings because we've already got that number down to seven million and ask for next year.
I just want to share what I did, what we did today. We sent this out prior to walking in, freezing all spending accounts for FY twenty four. And we can potentially save a million bucks, you know, by freezing.
Oh, you got a million and a half in salary savings.
But I'm just adding on top of that. You understand, like, when I say everything's on the table to to keep us top tier, you know, we're trying to do that. The reality, we don't sell tickets. You know, I can't sell an album. You know, we don't generate money. We get what we're told.
And we're we're going to need a slide with a breakdown of the ten million. No, of the ten million ask.
Or where it's going to.
Yes, I hear you say it's going to steps and cola and but I want, I need, as Commissioner Grasso says, we need what the lines cost.
Well, it was fifteen before the cuts, so actually the fifteen million ask, if you would.
Commissioner, I want's the fifteen ask.
We just cut, so for example, um,
Yeah, but just
I got you, I got you.
For the public to see.
Just as an FYI.
Yes, yes, yes.
Dr. Townsend, I watched your meeting in its entirety.
Yes.
I appreciate it. You did get everybody up there. You did go line by line. Um, I know you've probably already thought of this. As we ask you today, you have to get back to us, you know, because we don't always come to the table, any of us with all the answers. But I know you will be going back to some of your um department heads who didn't have a clear explanation for you what was included in that figure and what pork they could cut. Um, I know you'll be doing that too and possibly finding some savings. But one thing really struck me. We have a student from Charlotte Hall that we taxi to Patuxent High School. Why?
Mr. Navarro has the answer.
Tony Navarro, Chief Operations Officer. Yes, Ms. Grasso, we do that. Uh, that's covered other McKinney Vento program where it's mandated that we transfer that student from Charlotte Hall to Patuxent High School.
And what is that program?
McKinney Vento for homeless students.
Homeless students. So that's the law, McKinney Vento Act.
He doesn't have any schools or he or she in Saint Mary's County?
Don't want to get into details because of FERPA and privacy.
There you go, okay.
But that is a law. So, you know, so and it's it's grant funded transportation as well. So it's, you know, so it's it's so many.
Well, there's so many moving parts and pieces. I know that. Um, that that just really struck me.
Right, and and and, you know, like we shared, you know, we're all just trying to do a basic, the easy thing says, cut that, cut that. Some stuff has restrictions. You know, some stuff you cannot do. Um, so it's 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 a Rubik's cube that we're trying to solve, seriously. And in good faith, again, there's no, I hope no one walks away from this thinking they're hiding something. What's the, we want to have the best school system possible and with this um shock, we're still trying to do that. We've not given up and thrown our hands out. That's it. That's what it is. We're fighting, you know, to maintain the integrity, you know. I again, thank you for the support you've offered in the past because if we didn't have that little bit of money, um, you know, thank you. That's all I can say. And um you whatever questions any members of our county commissioners have, any members of the community, um, our elected, what, send them through and we answer to the best of our ability. We probably fielded five, six hundred questions and we continue to field them um to get an understanding and to be as transparent as we can.
So we're at number five now. Where were we pre COVID?
Ten, eleven, twelve. You know, we're we're
You you're new. How about maybe somebody that's been here?
It's only what I know when I came aboard.
Good morning. I'm Susan Johnson, the Chief Academic Officer. Prior to COVID, um, we were at the top of the the state. I can't say what position, one, two, three, four or five off the top of my head, but but we worked through uh the changes in the state assessments and our students and teachers rose to the challenge and and we were putting out prior to the the pandemic good results as well. Throughout the pandemic is where we started to lose some um falter. They made some changes to the state assessment for mathematics and we've been working through those pieces. If we compare our data to where we were at the beginning in two thousand fifteen to where we got, were a year ago with the math assessment, you would see commensurate um results and we're slowly making those changes to address those things.
Because I know we've been as high as number two. I don't, did we ever make number one? We've always been, I thought in
Montgomery County Eagle, let that happen.
Not necessarily Montgomery, but Howard and uh Windsor County sometimes, sometimes Washington County pulled ahead. So we were in vying for those top three positions during that time.
So we slipped down to ten during COVID?
Yes, sir.
So that's what I'm sharing. We were able to, you know, gain our position from, um, you know, COVID slide affected everyone differently and we struggled big time, but the the team that was in place here, um, again, I can't give the credit to the staff enough. We have an amazing um workforce. We absolutely do it at all levels, from top to bottom. And um, you know, as much as we can continue to invest in them when their professional development, which we've cut, um, you know, that's why they're official. You know, they they're trained up and they're applying what they know.
So a a a better slide of what that's fifteen or sixteen or whatever the ask was going to be. Um, a breakdown of the fund balance. What those categories are. I've seen that before. I know you've got it somewhere. So 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 the public will see what what's what's covered under.
The new fund balance, the new fund balance.
Yeah. So question, the four percent for the cola and the step, is that just for educators, teachers? Or is that support staff also in the contracts that you have to make good?
All. Includes all employees that are eligible for increases. There are some employees that are not covered by collective bargaining agreements, so they may not, some of them may not be eligible for step increases or for uh colas.
As you you've heard us all say, that the support staff and and educators are crucial. I mean, we have to do what we have to do there.
Yes.
Um, the sixty thousand, so if they get to four percent here, how close are we? And you have a dollar figure of what that's going to cost us by July one of twenty twenty six to get there?
I provided that range. It's hard to, because they're negotiating, it's hard to, you, I, we don't want to negotiate in bad faith and say, this is what it is. Because then what's the point of negotiating? Just do that and try to agree. Uh, but in in, I think the range, um,
That was on that slide, did?
Yes, there was a slide.
Okay.
Between two point two, two point four million dollar.
Now, does that number include a projection for support staff and educators, teachers, or just?
That's clearly for the career ladder.
Okay.
That's specifically for the career ladder. Um, again, knowing we're tightening our belts, it's hard to do extra, so.
So the sixty thousand starting salary is in that career ladder?
Copy.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Um, and I want to share lastly, before I I I I close or park my bus, I want to thank our Board of Education as well. I mean, every Calver County Public School Board of Education, I do believe, have the best interest of young people. Um, and, you know, it's a pleasure to work with them. It's a pleasure working with the team here and every stakeholder of Calver County Public Schools. So, you know, my charge is that we, not this, that we link up together and figure this out because as soon as we get through this process, July one, you know, I I I'm I'm a politician because I need to find that twenty two million dollars to make sure um the future is secured in Calver County. So we're we're at a a crossroad right now.
And if you can, as closely as you can, we'd like to know where you are in your current budget.
Copy. Wait, okay.
Because there's going to be some surplus in there, I think. Good, good, we're good?
Thank you all.
Well, thank you very much. We'll see you tonight.
I believe that brings us to public comment. Mr. County Attorney?
Thank you, sir. The board adopted a resolution in nineteen eighty nine to maintain the order and decorum of the governmental process. A copy is found to my right. Persons are welcome to address the Board of County Commissioners on any matter germane to the business of county government. Those addressing the board shall not be uncivil, rude, vulgar, profane or otherwise disruptive to the conduct of the board's business. All speakers are asked to identify themselves. Whether speaking as an individual, you be allocated two minutes, or as the appointed representative of a group, where you be allocated five. For those attending virtually, please use, uh, actually, this is a telephone, so please press star nine to raise your hand. The Ethics Commission is asked, and we remind speakers, of public comment. Do lobbyists include those who seek to influence public policy and lobbyists must register in advance?
Morning, Commissioners, unless the county attorney will let me speak on behalf of the Grand Mistake Noble Order of the Ali Baba Temple of Shrine. I'll speak on behalf of myself today. Uh, where's Mako in this? Uh, we we're part of Mako. Where's Mako? Where's Mr. Sanderson, Mr. Canali advocating for us? We knew about this in January. Have we filed a law? We knew about this in January. Have we filed a lawsuit against MSDE and Estat about this evaluation? Have we, today's crossover day, so did we file a late file bill to get something adjusted for this? What are we gonna do about this shortfall? Uh, I know that we were gonna pay forward fund balance this year. We got eight more years of this tax credit where they're gonna evaluate here and we're gonna tax here. So where are we gonna fix this? Uh, as a union member, I can tell you that you can't say that you're gonna keep the classroom sacrosanct and not deal with it and the kids. We're gonna cut everything else without building service workers, without your bus aides, without your front office staff. The school day doesn't work. The classroom doesn't exist just in the classroom anymore. We talked about the McKinney-Vento kids this morning. We have to give those kids continuity of services. We bus kids to Kennedy Krieger five days a week with transportation, with a full-size bus. We need to look at ways that the county can do transportation in a more effective, uh, efficient way. We need to look at ways, you know, Mr. Hart, to your point, all hands on deck. When I go into that school, it is all hands on deck every day. When they're pulling IAs to cover algebra. No offense to my long-term substitute friends that are, you know, high school graduates with a pulse, they can't teach French. We need highly qualified, certified staff and we have to be able to keep them in this county and not cross the bridge every day. We need to keep them in this county to work in this county. Whatever happens with Dominion and Exelon, I got no fix for that, but we lowered taxes. We kept taxes stagnant. DPW hasn't raised fees and we saw people get thirty thousand dollar bills. If not now, when are you gonna raise taxes, Mike Hart? When are you gonna raise taxes, Ms. Grasso, Mr. Hans, Mr. Ireland, Mr. Cox? If not now, when? We are in a crisis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the room?
Commissioners, how you doing? Brandon Temple, I'm a citizen of Calver County. I think it's important, uh, how I understand this is we provided tax credits and the state evaluated us at a hundred percent of tax value and not at the tax credit value. That's what I've understood from what I've seen in, in public discourse. But I don't think that's been accurately portrayed to the public and I think that's where the vacuum of information comes in, where all the rumors start spreading across the county. To me, I do agree, um, with Joe here, that we probably need, I wonder what we can do to pursue legal ramifications for this because what people don't understand is that Calver County just doesn't offer these property tax credits out of goodness of their heart. Okay, these are only authorized by state legislation. So the state wants to bring growth. They want to bring jobs. So they say, hey, counties, you can do these things to grow jobs and to grow revenue for the state. And then, when they're doing their calculations for, for funding for schools, they calculate it at the rate that's a hundred percent and not at the property tax credit level. So the state essentially is the ones having their cake and eating it too. All right, they're getting the revenue. They got the business. It's already here. And then they're cutting their own budget in a time of crisis and offloading that on y'all. And I don't think the community understands that piece of it. So how can the state authorize tax credits, authorize the counties to pursue tax credits, to bring business in, and then penalize them for doing just that? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the room? And caller five zero eight three, press star nine if you wish to provide comment. I believe that's all.
Thank you. That brings us to Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Cox?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, as you just heard, we're gonna have a tough budget season this year, but we're gonna make it through it and, uh, with everybody's help. Uh, just have one condolences this week, uh, keeping prayers. A trot family, they lost a loved one. Thank you.
Commissioner Ireland?
Also the family of June Holland. Uh, she was Sylvia Holland, who was a county employee. Her mother died at eighty-three. Wonderful lady. Um, Saturday morning, I was putting up signs for the hospice culinary event at each park and I had the opportunity to ride through each park and so we'll say thank you to our parks and rec staff. The parks are clean. The fields look great. Um, there was people out and about enjoying our parks. Uh, we're very fortunate to have those areas that people can go enjoy, whether it's walking or kids playing ball or games or whatever. And I did see where we have our, uh, our pickleball courts under construction in each of those parks. Hopefully those will be up and running so more people can enjoy those. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Hart?
As has been mentioned, we've had unfortunately a lot of folks pass our last two weeks and just my deepest condolences out to their families.
Thank you. Commissioner Grasso?
Well, all of us attended a po-acre meeting down in South County on the twelfth of March. I attended a public awards banquet at post two oh six on the fourteenth and, uh, they honored, um, from our nine-one-one to the, um, to the jail, to the trooper of the year, to the sheriff's deputy of the year. Uh, the food was great. It was, it was very, very nice. And, um, President Hans and I did a virtual woman-to-woman on Saturday and that was done quite well. Um, it was real easy to maneuver and to go into the different rooms to acknowledge, um, some of the recipients. And like, um, Commissioner Ireland said, the hospice event is gonna be this Friday. It's gonna be at the Hall at Huntingtown. It's always a great event. And if you can come and support our hospice at the Chesapeake, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Grasso. So, uh, last Thursday night, I attended the Women of the World Award Reception held at the Calver Art Gallery and I believe that night they recognized our county vet for.
Nice.
We did. Um, yeah, so it was a nice event and, um, what else? I did something else. Jeez. So, uh, yesterday, yesterday I did have fun. Um, I went to a mutual elementary school where I read a farm book to Mrs. Torres, second grade class. I have to thank Principal Hoxhurst and Mrs. Torres for allowing me in their class, but I think they set me up. I think I was in a second grade, uh, AP class because every question I asked those kids about agriculture, they knew the answers. Uh, even down to, there was a picture in the book where they were cleaning manure out of a shed and I said, what do you do with manure? And they all throw their hands up and I pick on this little boy and he says, you spread it on fields and you grow crops and it stinks. I asked him the chocolate milk question about what color cow gives chocolate milk. Couldn't get him on anything. Pink milk, nothing. They knew black and white cows give milk. Doesn't matter. It's all white. You color it. They were, those kids were great. It is, uh, it's a great thing and my fellow commissioners are gonna do it, uh, behind me. So, uh, don't, don't miss that opportunity because, uh, they are our future and they will brighten your day. Um, but again, I want to thank Principal Hoxhurst and Ms. Torres for allowing me in that yesterday. Um, you see, just a reminder again about our public hearing tonight at seven PM. We're gonna be right here in this room. Uh, and you can go online and watch. You can mail in your comments or email them to dawnwood@calvercountymd.gov. You can, uh, the staff recommended budget document is online at www.calvercountymd.gov/fy25. Uh, you've heard it's not gonna be pretty. And this coming Saturday on March twenty-third is the annual duck race. Our own Commissioner Hart is gonna be dressed up in one of these duck outfits and swimming around in the pool. And that'll be from three thirty to four at the aquatic center here in Prince Frederick. And all that money goes to support therapeutic recreational activities that go on there at the pool during the year. And the next day on Sunday, there'll be a Parks and Rec Easter egg hunt at twelve-thirty at Holland Point Park. Uh, bring your basket and your camera to make sure you get a picture with the Easter Bunny. I swear there was something else I did, but it slips my mind. I'm so sorry. Uh, I think that concludes my report. Uh, we look forward to seeing you all tonight. So you have a motion for me?
I sure do. I move to recess to executive session pursuant to general provisions, Article Sec- Sections three dash three oh five B, one I to discuss personnel matters for those over whom the board has jurisdiction and eight to consult with staff and others about pending or potential litigation.
Second.
I have a motion to second. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Everyone, have a great day.